All right, if everybody is ready, we will call this September 22nd, 2016, Compisticative Work Education Work Session to Or. Motion to adopt the agenda for today. Can I have a chance to look at it?
I believe we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, honor the player. Call Dr. Banks. Do you give my identification?
Yes, please, sir. Let us pray. Yes, Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. I ask, Father God, that you would be with us and guide us, guide our thoughts from near and afar. Bless us all for the works that we do in this community and for our children. I pray in the name of Jesus that you would just guide us tonight. Let us make decisions that will impact lives in a feasible manner. And I pray, God, that when we do these things, you will continue to be pleased with us as we try to advance the works in your kingdom. This is our prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We ask in Jesus Christ, the most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Banks. Let me say real quick, we've got Mr. Johnson is on the phone with us. He is in the hospital right now, wasn't able to make the meeting. We've got him on the phone, I'll try to keep him on the phone while we can throughout the meeting. Mr. Johnson, can you hear us?
Mr. Johnson, you hear us? All right.
All right. Uh, Lisa?
Yes, sir. You've got an agenda in front of you. It was presented through E-Board last week. And you'll see the agenda. The first item of business is the review of minutes from the previous month. Those minutes have been presented for review. Are there any questions or comments? If there's no changes required of the minutes, then we will place them on the consent agenda for the regular meeting at 7:30. The next item is our monthly financial report. Mr. Dreghush will present the year-end financial report and the FY '17, July and August financial reports for board approval. For your comparison and account detail will be provided with each report. Also, a summary of these loss revenue and expenditures will be presented. Mr. Dreghush, do you want to present these items?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Elise. What you have is three different reports. We'll start off with the June final 2016 summary up there at the top. Okay. Our fund balance year ending was $6,310,159.35. You can see when we started out the year, we, July 1, '15, we were at $4,669,9992. So, we've basically added $1,006 to the fund balance. We've actually put some money aside during FY '16. And put us in a place where we're about 10% of our expenditures, actually a little better than 10% of our expenditures, which is one of the first times we've ever been in that kind of a position in quite a long time. If you bring up the comparison now.
And I'll point out our policy reads such that states that we should have 10% of our operating budget in fund balance and no more than 15%.
That's right.
So, we're within that threshold where we'd like to be.
And this is a comparison report, which again would show you as of June. This is the highest that we've been in four years. We are at the $4,925 back to '13, $5,517 in '14. And then, as we mentioned just a minute ago, $4,669 last year in '15. So, now '16, closing the year, we're at $6,310,000. Any questions there?
What do you attribute that, please?
Just a lot of hard work. I mean, the budget was set at a time when we kind of felt like we, you know, we had some challenges in front of us still yet with... But revenues came in, you know, we got the additional funding of the austerity money. We had actually budgeted for an entire year of medical premium increases. We only, those medical premium increases, we never find out later on, didn't start until January. So, there's about $300,000 of favorable variance there in just that one line of them. So, those kinds of things, keeping our staffing levels at a very stable level, not adding a lot of physicians, not adding a lot of...
You know, the comparison, say from '14, '13, and '14, the number of classroom teachers we had compared to last year.
I don't have it with me, but I can get it for you.
I just wonder if that's where some of this is coming from, having as many teachers.
Well, I, we have collapsed some this year, I know that, I may note that. We just didn't fill it, we didn't...
Collapsed some last year. And I will point out, we're down by 88 students over a two-year period. So, as we've been losing students, we've been having to get smaller.
But that, you know, that, I guess, higher class sizes and collapsing physicians and whether it be in the classroom or as support physicians, that's been going on for three, four, five years now, that we've been in an ongoing program of looking and fine tuning things as we go along. It's not just been a one-year kind of a...
And I would say that actually started back around 2008, pretty much Javering District in the state had to start that kind of work.
That's right.
And that's just been the way public schools have had to operate.
I know we actually talked about it in a retreat one time, a couple of years ago. We've been three now. And we had the number of classroom teachers we had and kind of what we were doing and we had, you know, kind of going to mind where we needed to get to to be able to, you know, stay out of trouble financially. Don't know that we ever quite got there, but things started to turn and, you know, we didn't have quite do as far, I guess, as we probably would at that time. But, you know, there was an effort to try to reduce and get down to where, you know, we kept this thing out the rein.
My concern was, we're keeping the student ratio low enough that it's manageable in the classrooms?
We just recently looked at our class sizes across the board here, not just one or two weeks ago, and we still have some very good class sizes. I live from my...
High school?
At all levels. It's a little more difficult, I think, at the high school level because you have a different kind of setup there because of the way they, the way they schedule. But certainly, within the elementary grades and middle school, it certainly looks...
Freshman campus?
Yeah, freshman campus. I mean, the eighth grade class that went into freshman campuses last year was coming out...
One bad student's blood mouth is up, I don't want to be hurt.
Right.
Classroom teachers are...
Yes, sir. Do we want to go into the detail as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If you'll look at the... That's it. Yes. The first sheet on, of course, you'll note has, we're at 100%. This is the end of the fiscal year for 2016. Our revenues were at 100.41%. So, we were pretty much spot on as far as our revenues were concerned. That's local, state, and so on. When you look at the very, start at the very top line, sorry for backing up on you there. That top line, that's your, at the lower taxes, it was at 98.16%. We were a little, little under there. TADT, we're at 110%. So, that's been very, very helpful to us in terms of that TADT tax. Other local, we're at 99.72, so we're about right where we need to be as far as our other local. And then, of course, the state, we, that, those are all given to us when we get those. And there is some upside to some of that state money because of some additional grants that we got subsequent to when we budgeted 2016 that were add-ons that we didn't have when we first went through that budgeting process. We go on to the expenditure piece. Again, you'll see that we're at 93, 103% on support services, pupil services there, improvement in instructional services, we're at 101, 96% at media services. Just going down, all the way down through to the bottom line, overall, we're at 94.7% of budget. We had budgeted about $62,400, a little over, and payment at 59,128, 569,630. Questions? Okay. We'll go on to July, and we'll be asking the board to approve this or these financials on the consent agenda, assuming, Dr. Elise?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, all three of these will show up on consent agenda for approval tonight. And then, we'll be submitting our '16 information to the state once this has been approved by board, which, which needs to be done by September 30. Okay, on to July 2016 for fiscal year 2017. We've got a fund balance of $6,306,464.59. Just a little, little drop from our year-ending amount, about $4,000. So, not, not a big change there. We go on to the comparison sheet. There again, we're still showing that $1,006, $5,50 difference between FY '15 and, or FY ' '16 and FY '17 for, for the month of July. So, we've held, held together our fund balance and kept it steady for, for the time being. During the months of July and August, if you remember, we are, we are posting accruals, but we're taking revenues as accruals, and we're also taking our expenditures that, for those 10 and 11-month employees that we've accrued during the year. So, that's a lot of why you won't see a big expenditure numbers during the months of July and August. If we move on to the detailed questions at all? Okay. If we move on to the detailed report for July. Of course, that's one month, so that's 8.33%. And to date, we've only collected 1.9% revenues at this point in time. That's because, again, as I just mentioned, we accrued two months of expenditure, of revenues during the months of August and July to match up with the accrued expenditures. So, you won't see a lot of revenues posted just yet either. And, and this is our low point in terms of tax collections. The bills haven't gone out until, they won't go out until here in September. And once those go out, they're, they're not due until December 1st. So, we don't see any appreciable tax, local tax money coming in until beginning, we really see a little bit coming in in November with the early payers, but then December is when we get the big chunk of it in. Likewise, with expenditures, again, we are at 8.33% of the year, but we've only had total expenditures of 1.9% of the budget, a total of $1,109,000 during the month of, of July. All right? Now, we'll go to August. And with the month of August, of course, this is the time of year with schools starting up that you have a lot of startup expenses with, with getting, getting into the classroom. So, our fund balance ending August 31, 2016 was $5,680,259.15. So, we've actually seen about 700, about 400,000, actually about $400,000 drop in, in our fund balance. Sorry, $620,000 drop. But in spite of that, you can see on the comparison, if we bring that up, that we are still holding at about $1,650,000 difference between FY '16 and FY '17. So, that, what we brought into fund balance, we're holding that, that, that level at this point in time, even through the month of August.
I think something important to note when we're looking at this fund balance is that we gave all of our employees a 3% increase, this one-time supplement increase of 3%. Keep in mind, when we proposed that, the idea was we would pay for it using the excess fund balance that we had this year. So, about $800,000 of that $1,006 is dedicated for that 3% increase. And then, if you remember, we budgeted for around $500,000 that we would be able to add with that fund balance to make that 3% increase. So, while it is a fund balance, right at half of it is dedicated to that 3%, 3% increase. Would that be fair to say?
That's, that's correct. That's right.
And we've got a full year about that share increase this year as well.
And we've got, you know, it begins in July again, I mean, in January, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be the same, it's going to be July, right?
Yeah.
But we do have an increase in TRS coming up for next year. July 1 of '17, TRS costs are going to go up for the school system by about $985,000. So, we know that next year we'll incur an additional TRS. They're going up around 2%, a little more than 2% and a half, 2.5% on TRS, the employer portion. So, we know that will be coming down the road.
So, the state's not paying as much?
TRS is required in the school districts to pay 2.5% more on behalf of each employee. So, we paid a lot.
We're paying 14.27% currently. We're going to go to 16.81% in 2018. That's an 18% increase. You know, we're talking about 2.5%. That 2.5% is the difference between the 14.27 and the 16.81. But when you take that as a percentage, we're talking about an 18% increase in our contribution, the school system's contribution to TRS.
So, the state's, the state's, their part is going to be less?
No. The state doesn't put anything into TRS.
TRS is a private entity, basically, that is, that is governed by, a board sanctioned by the state. But they are an entity unto themselves, and to stay liquid and be able to provide the retirement benefits they provide, they're going up on the employer portion forever.
Now, the employer portion is staying at 6%. The employee's not going to be adding any more in next year. And this is probably at least the fourth year that it's been at 6% if I'm not mistaken.
And something else we have to consider that I mentioned a while ago is, if you go back three years, we're down 88 students. So, with a decrease in student, that means a decrease in QVE funding from the state. So, that, that's another issue that we'll be addressing here moving forward. And then, the rise in healthcare costs. In January of '17, classified staff premium per employee is increasing by $100 per month from $746 to $846.
And, and we haven't really seen the impact of the 3% because your, all your certified staff, teachers, parapros that are 10-month employees, they're really not going to see that until, starting now in September. So, we haven't even cut the check, first check for that 3% for them at this point in time because they've been paid off the accrued money that we have drawn in August. So, that impact really hasn't even hit us at this point in time.
But it's still a break before. It's just that we've got to be cautious, knowing some of these expenses are going to come at us down the road.
Any questions? Okay. Detailed now. Now, we're at 16.66% of the year. Two months has passed. Revenues are still lagging at about 4.15% overall. There again, we'll only see things begin to ramp up. And we already seen a little bit of an uptick in local revenues in September. That's not reported here, obviously. We won't report that until October. But we're beginning to see that increase just a little bit. So, it, it'll continue to get better as we go through these next few months. If you move on to the expenditures now. We are currently sitting at 5.11%. And this is not reflected, obviously, because of those accruals that don't post in. So, we're, we're looking very good from an expenditure standpoint, knowing, as I just mentioned, that 3% is coming next month. Okay? All right. And I guess the last thing within the financials would be the SWOSS report.
I will update the board that we met, I think it was the contractor meetings, that Tuesday. Tuesday, we met with general contractors out of Nichols site, and there were seven contractors at the Men's Tour Meeting. So, they had a chance to look around the campus and ask whatever questions they wanted to ask, but, so it looks like we'll have seven general contractors bidding on Nichols.
Okay. Let me, let me just kind of briefly go through the SWOSS report. For the month of, for the month of August, we brought in $450,094.79. Our current average monthly collections for SWOSS for are $458,542.40. We collected to date a total of $7,336,678.36. And our total expenditures to date out of the bond money are $3,681,154.66. So, we'll get your copies of this afterwards, and I'll get you, I'll send you a hard copy. I'll get you a hard copy of it. That's all I have. Is anybody else have questions?
Was that $450 down?
The $450 was actually up a little bit from the month before, but it's still, it's been kind of a seesaw that we've been at as high as 47, well, actually, 539 beginning in January of this '16, and we've been at 475, 474. But it, it's a little better than last month, but not, not where we want it to be. We really would like it, see it, or back under around 470, if at all possible.
All right. It pleases the board, we'll place the financial report on the consent agenda, and we'll get you a copy of the SWOSS report. Next item on the agenda is out-of-state travel. We have a number of trips from the ROTC. Yes, sir?
Question.
Yes, sir.
How much would we call the voluntary employees 3%?
To do what, sir?
Give all the employees that 3% raise.
To give them the 3%. It's costing us. How much is the 3% costing?
In salary? I think somewhere around $900,000. All right.
It's, it's close to $900,000, in the ballpark of $900,000.
If everything goes the same, I'd like to do that.
Just salary?
That's the salary, not the benefits.
Sir?
Everything falls as planned, like I think it might be. I'd like to consider that.
Well, I, I think that, you know, we're giving the 3% right now, and I would like to see also us be able to give that 3% next year. I think that's something we all do want, do want to try to do.
We're just trying to give them...
Yes, sir. That'll be our goal, is to make that 3%. If we've done this year, be able to do it again next year. I agree 100%. Yes, sir.
Chairroom.
All right. You see out-of-state travel right there. We've got a number of ROTC trips. They're, they're competing quite a bit. And we do have the one trip with the Ag Science Group, FFA, and then we have the trip with ART. And that out-of-state travel will be placed on the consent agenda. The next item on the agenda is the Board Code of Conduct. Each year, we're required by law to review the Board Code of Conduct. So, I've included the Board Code of Conduct in the agenda. You'll find an attachment there that has our policy BH, which is the Board Code of Ethics. You'll see the Domain 1, Governance and Structure. And then, each one of the items under number 1. Domain 2, Strategic Planning. Domain 3, Board and Community Relations. Domain 4, Policy Development. Domain 5, Board Meetings. Domain 6, Personnel. Domain 7, Financial Governance. And then, the last section is Conduct as a Board Member. This was sent out last week as far as the agenda, and then there also is the Conflict of Interest piece of that policy. of Interest piece of that policy. We've had time to review that, and we'll review it here tonight. And you also find the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy, BHA, that has to be reviewed each year.
Can you explain that, Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir. The Conflict of Interest Policy includes a piece on financial governance. No board member shall use or attempt to use his or her official position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for himself or herself, his or her immediate family members, or others. So no board member shall act in his or her official capacity in any manner where he or she, his or her immediate family member, or business organization, which he or she has a material financial interest that would reasonably be expected to impair his or her objectivity or independence of judgment. And it goes on to cite several other pieces that involve conduct as board members and guidance for board members. And this is required for us to review each year, the local policy that we have, as well as the state law that's required for us to have this policy. And I would like to commend our board for the way our board conducts business, and thank you for what you do. The next item on the agenda is the Coffey County Board of Education Annual Training We are required, once again by law, to develop a local training plan. And this plan will be followed over the next 12 months, not only to satisfy the law, but also just to become a better organization. And once again, I want to commend the board on your efforts to attend the training at GSBA conferences, and then we have our retreats here with trainers that come in. We even hosted the governance training this past year for all the school governing councils, and our board members were there. We brought in the trainers to train the governance council members. So we will move back through this plan this coming year to, one, satisfy the law that we'll be trained, but then, two, to just become better. And that has to be approved on the consent agenda. So we will add that to the consent agenda for approval, and then we will submit it to the State Department of Education. GSBA Exemplary Board, we have been going through the process. The biggest part of it is the training that the board members are required to exceed what's required by the state in regards to training. So if we work our training plan, which we have been doing, we will exceed those requirements. So we are going to submit an application for exemplary board this year, just as we did last year. And this application will be placed on the consent agenda at the regular meeting. And the due date for that is October 1, so we'll be sending that in once this is approved by the board. The next item on the agenda is the GSBA Self-Assessment. I sent out an electronic message via email to each one of you to review the GSBA Governance Team Self-Assessment. I've received completed copies of this, and if I've not gotten your completed copy, I'll get it from you after the meeting or the next day or two.
Do they have one of them?
Yes, sir. I've got yours, Ms. Johnson. Surplus property, we've got the surplus property on the agenda. We presented this last month to the board at the work session. This is the Ambrose Surplus Property that's in the warehouse out there. And we're asking the board to approve this on the consent agenda. We did not place on the consent agenda. Dr. Banks, do you want to describe this agenda item?
Well, with the surplus property, what we were trying to do at Ambrose Warehouse, as you all know, probably since I moved to Coffey County, 2001 up to now, that had been the place where things that were not needed anymore at all the schools, that was a central location for them to send furniture. You can see they had large chairs, desks, et cetera, file cabinets, carts. We were trying to actually get to a point where we can clear out that warehouse and use it for, I guess, space that will be more necessary to us as the transitions that are about to take place within the probably next three or so, or four months. We're trying to clear that out. We've thought about the possibility of having an independent person come in, like some type of auctioneer, that will actually get that, those items sold, or give a percentage of what's being, what could be sold out at that warehouse. But there's a ton, plethora of stuff out there that really needs to go. And that's where we're at right now. I had, we had a meeting last, probably on, last Thursday. I've had about probably three different schools, after we had the PBI meeting here, rode out to the Ambrose Warehouse, and some of the, I guess, personnel members, they put some duct tape, highlights on, sticky marks, stickers on the furniture, so they can come back and get the items that they wanted to have as far as usage to their school, whether it's be file cabinets or more.
So we did give our employees an opportunity?
Yes, give them the first opportunity to get what they actually want out of there. So that was basically it.
Any comments?
We have talked about, as Dr. Banks said, rendering the service of a, either an auctioneer or somebody that specializes in these types of sales, to come in and conduct the sale for the district. And that way, it will remove district personnel administration from.
Have an actual auction on the side?
Have an independent person come in and run the sale. That way, it's independent of the school administration conducting the sale. So with the board approval of this surplus property, we're going to move forward to secure an individual to come in or a group to come in and conduct the sale, and we'll be looking for a group.
We've got some local folks that do that.
Great. Yes, sir. I'll get some names from you if you know of some people that do that, and we'll be looking for a group to conduct that sale. Is there anything else on that? Thank you, Dr. Banks. We have GAE, Policy GAE. This is the agreements policy. The State Department of Education, State Board of Education have changed the rules for the state, and the legislature changed the law, which now gives a teacher the ability to appeal their evaluation to the Board of Education. That's never been in place before. Counsel, do you want to make comment on that?
Let me just quickly. The 1992 Zellmiller Governor, they passed a law saying, trying to get unions, they came up, Governor Miller vetoed it, said, "We'll come up with a policy allowing teachers to appeal things that affect their important party." That sounds a little bit... Anyway, never have they had there in the law where you could appeal anything on job performance or any personnel evaluations. But this year, they passed a law that said that now, if you look on your, Dr. Lee, some Section 3B, your policy's always said that exclusion, performance ratings contained in personnel evaluations are excluded. But now then, they've got a right to come up if there was any procedural deficiency. Procedure deficiency, but they cannot, Dr. Lee, appeal their evaluation or any job termination or anything like that. It's just if they came up and said, "What's our new instrument?"
The TEE.
And they had, you didn't give them enough notice it was coming up or something. GSBA was by and large called, unaware this thing surfaced the last day of the session. Nobody really had any idea it was there. And it really, all it really says is that we've got, they can appeal a procedural deficiency related to their teacher leadership evaluation. So it's not the evaluation itself.
All right. Thank you for that clarification, sir. Appreciate you being here. I know you've had some.
Oh, I'm fine. I just didn't, I didn't want to get feeling bad, and I'm not, I should have taken the wife's advice and taken it out on her or something.
Yes, sir. All right. That policy, if it pleases the board, will be placed on the consent agenda. And will be reviewed over the next 30 days to be made for public review.
And Dr. Lee, just about the, what I said, that 3B1, that last little however, that's really, the rest of it is just cleanup stuff.
All right.
But that said, however, they can come up and, on procedural deficiency on the part of the school system and conduct an evaluation, but not evaluation itself.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there's no questions about any of these items, we will ask for audience participation. It's like there's no audience participation.
No, I don't want to say that.
All right. I will ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and employment of staff, personnel. Yes, sir. And property. We will discuss property and the sale of property. One more. Second.
All right. We have, we've got to be out of the session, we have a moment to execute executive session.
Would we execute executive session?
Yes, sir. One more favor. Out of the session. Oh. Don't you have anything to say? All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we've got to move to the jury.
Yes.
All right, favor. All right, work session is adjourned.